Please, Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Here.
Dr. Wogley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mr. Canwisher.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Buckman.
Here.
Please rise and join me for the board of members.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will put the motion.
I move the board through the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, that the agenda is approved as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything. Not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to our guests this evening. If there's anyone here that would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Do we have anyone? All right. I think most are here for one reason. All right. I will move on to the board table if you have anything you'd like to share this evening. Mrs. McEwen, anything this evening? All right. Director Wheeler?
Nothing tonight.
All right. Director Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Director Kunkel?
The Sparkles team did a fantastic job performing at Festival of Trees on, after the parade.
Thank you. Amyann, Mrs. Kenyon?
No, I have nothing.
Okay.
Mrs. Smith.
Director Smith?
Thank you, best for this evening.
All right. Director Canwisher?
I just want to give thanks for the staff and administration and the teaching group at the district for enabling us to meet like this, have an amazing district and an amazing community to be a part of, and for those parents of students who are doing a good job of making sure their students are keeping the task and getting the job done.
Thank you. Director Wheeler?
I just want to thank the community and our administration for all the help and having all of us go to the IAS feed meeting. I know it's on as an agenda item, but it's always really nice to have that support to meet annually with other school boards from across the state and hear what other districts are doing and also just doing some board education as well. It's really informative and it's great that we have that opportunity to do it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Kling, Smith?
I have nothing.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Damon?
I just want to say quickly, I know some of you have had this experience, this was my first, I went to the All-State Concert. Congratulations to our students, to our music departments. Pleasant Valley was so well represented and this, these students are the best of the best. These musicians are so good. Their performances, their musical pieces were very, very hard. I mean, just, I wasn't to let me too, but congratulations and thank you to our directors. It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work. A lot of rehearsals. Amazing to see them all come together.
Oh, my gosh, so amazing.
And I believe it'll be televised again on Thanksgiving evening.
Thank you for saying so, yes.
So if you haven't seen it, if they're live, you can watch it on PBS, I believe.
Yes, so this year I won't have to stand this far from the TV.
Yeah, exactly.
Because I'm like trying to.
Well, thank you. Thanks for all presenting us in the audience. That's great. All right, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Stroos. Mrs. Bruskern, I intentionally skipped you, so now it's your turn.
Thank you. I just have one thing this evening, and it's to recognize our wonderful Spartan Assembly. Just as a reminder, last week we talked about how for the eighth year in a row, they won the annual Student Hunger Drive. And I am going to turn it over to Mrs. Carr and Mr. Moore to introduce the students and then let you kind of take it away.
I will let them introduce themselves and then they kind of have something first that they, let's say, if you guys want to go over and introduce them.
Great.
I'm Lauren Durk, I'm an executive on Spartan Assembly. And I'm a junior.
Hi, my name is Inshika Desai, I'm also an executive on Spartan Assembly, and I'm a senior.
Hello, I'm Sam Brockman, and I'm a senior.
I'm Anna Carr, and I'm also senior.
I'm Ava Salvador, I'm a junior.
I'm Remy Borger, I'm a freshman.
I'm Claudia Jacobinage, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Peyton Rexer, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Elijah Valagi, and I'm a junior.
I'm Inshika Gando, and I'm a junior.
I'm Andrew Hardsock, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Joy Dango, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Luna Martinalton, and I'm a junior.
And good evening. On behalf of the Spartan Assembly Student Council, we would like to take this time to thank all of the people who supported us for this year's Student Hunger Drive. Raising 102,636 pounds would not have been achievable if it weren't for the support provided by the PV community. Thank you for your generosity and willingness to support the Student Hunger Drive.
We would also like to recognize sophomore Joy Dango. She was selected as a state officer for the Iowa Association of Student Councils, and at the Fall State Conference, she interviewed alongside many candidates, and she'll be serving in this position up till the end of her senior year.
Thank you to all for your time and effort, and we can't wait for next year's Student Hunger Drive.
And just to add, Joy is maybe the third one from Spartan Assembly, because she is a current state officer, goes with the one that we have in Pleasant Valley. So that's a big achievement for us, so we're very proud of her and Inshika for her work the last two years. I personally want to say thank you to Heather Larson for helping us with the communication this year. That is a huge task that is always kind of looming over us, and she just made that so easy this year by just, I shared with her her calendar events and was like, can you get this taken care of? Yes. And then also this new study for making sure that it goes in the board meeting minutes every week. Communication is key when it comes to the Student Hunger Drive, and so these two ladies really helped us out this year, and we are very appreciative of that. And to add on, when they say PV community, our elementary schools did an amazing job this year. Our junior high finally reached a goal that they set, so I think we had record numbers from all throughout the district this year, is they make our job a lot easier by supporting us from kindergarten up through the high school and everything like that. So we really are appreciative of everything that they do to help support us, and it really does take our entire district, our parents, our students, our teachers, everything, to succeed or to, for our success. We only increased by 300 pounds, but for us, that's a win because we're so high now. We just, if it's one pound, we're happy to increase here at the park, so.
She takes it all. It is her last year, though, so.
It is my last year.
Last Student Hunger Drive.
Last Student Hunger.
But we still have the Carr-Fickleball Classic. She's not out of that one.
We'll still be working on that. But yes, for the past four years, it has been wonderful to work with all of these amazing kids, and I will miss it. I'm not going to get teary-eyed. But my daughter's going to college away next year, so I need more time for myself, so I'm hoping to find someone to fill those shoes, but it has been eye-opening for me to be able to lead them in things like homecoming and the Student Hunger Drive. It's very eye-opening to see how hard that they work and how they've worked for our community that we all forget. So it has been a blessing for me to be their leader the past four years, so.
You know, students, a couple things I just want to say real quick is, you know, we were at a conference this last week, and we talked about leaders and leading with intention or leading with purpose. And I think when I look at all of you, you truly have done that, you've made a mark in our community. And everything that you do, you can either be a culture builder or a culture killer. And I would say you guys start our school year on such a positive note in the way you build the culture in our district, in our building, not just because of this and the Hunger Drive, but it's because of what you also do, like with the carnival, when we do the kickoff. The work that you guys put behind that is just amazing, and it just sets a tone. And I can also tell you this, when I was with the food bank earlier on at one of their conferences, where they kicked this whole thing off, they were so appreciative and could not say enough great things about all of you and the way you have taken this on and lead our community. It's not just a competition, they realize that, but they are so appreciative of the work that you do, and they look at you as leaders. And because of you, we are looking at, I should look at Mrs. McEwen, but they are looking at building a food pantry at our high school and at the junior high to impact all of our schools. And the food bank has said, how can we help you because of all the work that your kids do for us? That is in and of itself just a great thing, so thank you to all of you for what you do. Be so proud of it, and it's great to see the younger classmen in this as well to keep this going, whether you break 103,000 next year, who knows? But where you were originally when we first started this to where we are today is because of all the hard work of all of you, and you should be so proud of what you do. So, and thanks to the two of you for leading this as well.
Chair will be here another year, so.
I have a question. You know, every year you guys do such a great job, and every year we keep thinking, well, how, how, how do you rally everybody to try and break the record from the year before? Even this year, you said you have raised 300 pounds more than last year. So you already have such a high set goal, and you want to try and get it higher than that. What did you guys do differently this year than previous years to attain that goal and actually surpass what you had last year?
Yeah, so we made it clear to like keep motivating the council in our meetings, keep pushing everyone, because we saw the potential in all these students, so we just kept motivating everyone, and we got a lot of new ideas and creativity to create new events that we can do throughout the community.
To add on, we also tried doing a lot more outreach this year online and trying to find as many new members of our community as we can as possible. One of the things that we do alongside all of our physical outreach events is like corporate donations, and we're always doing outreach within our community to find anyone who we can network with to continue adding on to that.
Great, well, you know, I would say that all the previous people, every year you have new people that are working with you, and there obviously is a good transition plan because every year you guys, you know, surpassed what you did the year before, so that's great. And I'm especially thankful, I think our community is especially thankful this year, especially because, as you guys know, the government shut down for a while, and those SNAP benefits had been reduced. And I was getting calls from the food bank saying, yeah, hey, you know, can you please give us more than you normally do, just because we have a record number of people coming in and needing food? And so to know that, you know, you guys are also helping, especially this year, for people who needed to, just really comforting for me to know that we have a community that's surrounded by people who want to make sure that others are doing well. And I hope you guys take that mentality for the rest of your life, because that really means, means a lot to every community you're in, to be able to do what you can to help others out, especially those less fortunate than all of us. This is one way of showing it, so thank you very much for all that hard work, especially this year.
I think more things we need to tell them where we're at. Like we keep track, we weigh every box, we keep track of every dollar, and we never said, oh, ask where we at, where we at. Not important. Keep working hard, keep working hard. And so actually, they did a really good job this year, not asking too much, they kind of got used to it over the last couple of years, where we're like, we're not going to tell anybody where we're at. It's, it's not important, you're working hard, you're doing the best you can. And then they get to find out at the end, just like us, because we were off by like 8,000 pounds. We had more, because we don't weigh boxes correctly. But we always tell them, it's better to be under than over, and so, so they, they did a really good job of just, we know you're tired, we just had the last three weeks off, where we haven't met in the last two weeks, because we take a nice little break.
Oh, great.
Very deserving. After homecoming and then Hunger Drive, yeah.
It's a fun process, it's a lot, it's a lot of work, like, we start right from the beginning with back to school, yeah.
So is the duration the same every year? Or is it shorter this year?
No, I think it was, it's about the same. Homecoming was about the same, and then we picks up, and then Mr. Stroos threw something at us, and he was there, basically, can you guys do something? It was like last minute, so he threw that at us, and when they, welcome the teachers back. So we added that on, and then.
It was awesome.
It was a rock, that is, well.
So good.
Well, I mean, we get those things all the time, he throws the pen, and then Mr. Holly, hey, can you have these guys here? He's like, yep, I'm on it. So there's things thrown at us left and right that we have to pivot, but they do a good job with that. It did, they, it was one day shorter, that's about it. But it, it, it's like homecoming ends and then this starts, and we're, we try to do stuff in the summer, because we know we're a little sluggish coming off of homecoming, but it ends up being really five and a half weeks of collection, where it's all said and done, because you have to pack up everything.
And we're doing a kickball tournament this, this spring, as like a summer send-off to help us for the Hunger Drive.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
I'm just trying to come up with something new, so it's not stale ideas.
Do you know, so when the competition occurs, it's between all of our area schools, correct? So how far above was Pleasant Valley compared to the next one?
Do you guys want to tell us?
Forty, over 40,000 pounds.
Over 40,000 pounds. Again, a testament to all your work. And what was that?
Let the minutes reflect.
Yeah, they always ask us, when did you get these?
I know whenever I donate, I have, you know, I'll give cans, I'll give money, is there any preference over which is better to donate?
They prefer money, because they can do more with the money, whereas like we like the pounds, because it's, $1 is one and a half pounds, because they can go to like Campbell Soup and get more soup cans than we can go to, going to Hy-Vee, even with their deal. So they prefer money, we prefer the pounds, but.
Maybe a mix of both.
We like the mix, yeah.
We like the mix, because that sets us apart from the other schools. Like when you see what they have donated, theirs is more money, and we like to do both. But I did find out this year that they will accept, like people were donating toothpaste and stuff, I didn't think they would take that, but she said absolutely, like, so there are things that get donated sometimes that we, we aren't certain about, but there are a lot of things that they take, not just food, really. So that's something that she did mention, and bottled water, that's something we're going to push more next year, and that's something that they, that they are asking for a lot.
We like the food, because then the kids can see like the pallets build up in our main hallway, and like see like their hard work, and like the high schools too, that may not be a part of this, but donate their time, their food, so they can see it all start to pay off as well.
So it's a good, a good mix. The elementary schools really take care of the food, and if it, they don't bring in much money, those kids like to bring in. And I would say we probably got half our pallets from the elementary schools this year. They did amazing, and the junior high. All of them exceeded their goals, so they like really showed up this year. So that was really good, and I think that pushed our students at the end, as those were coming in, to see, oh, we got all this. I mean, there were, the last day, Mr. Holly was like, this kid just came up with all this stuff. We're like, well, he better hurry up and get it, because he wanted to go to his car, so he needed permission to go to his car, and like, last minute.
Pallets into the summer.
Oh, really?
Wow.
It was very last minute. I mean, they were coming in left and right with last minute. So that's how high school kids work.
They hated this year with incentives for students too, like the parking and the teacher's lot.
The parking and then, yeah, like Mr. Moore had a Moore's Market going on. Yeah, they did get a little more creative with incentives and things like that. So, and just little things that the kids and the high schoolers, like you get to pick your partner in a presentation. It's something simple like that, that they're like, oh yeah, I wanna do that because I don't wanna be with a random partner. So little ones such like that motivate them a little more. And I, I mean, I don't think they're low, but we all need motivation. And as, we just got motivation to fill something up for us during PD. So, you know, it's like, oh, you can, you can do this. So everybody needs a little motivation sometimes. So I think it's important that they see their hard work. And that's where the pallets, they could actually see that as opposed to that. We do tell them how much money and they, and they go, oh my gosh, that's like a salary for somebody. So I think there was, what did you write the check for?
Forty-two.
Forty-two thousand dollars that we raised this year. Plus online donations. And I never did get a total. That was around three or four thousand. So, yeah, that was a huge check. Like, guys, look at this check.
Well, speaking of pallets, another group that Ms. Damon also mentioned is just our maintenance team and how they help transport them from all the elementary schools to the high school to get them off and sent off. So that takes a lot of work on their part as well.
It takes a lot of work. And I know like Kim Cullen was helping me and James was always out there with the mail truck, taking care of that. And our custodians also as well. Amanda was there on loading day. I mean, she was sweating.
Cory.
Cory, they were all, I think Paul was out, um, for a while there. But yes, like just making sure we were all ready for loading day. So, yeah, they, we had a system this year. I was working with Kim and we were just on it and the schedule was flawless this year. So after four years, we figured it out. So, yes, we do appreciate our custodians as well and our maintenance team helping us with that.
Well, let's give these students a great. And seniors, I don't know what you're gonna do next fall, but if you wanna come back and help again, you're more welcome to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Farr, for all your service to Spartan Assembly. And Mr. Moore, we're glad you're sticking around another year.
She keeps saying we, like we're doing this together next year. Every, every event is like, next year we need to make sure we do this. She does wanna do a assembly, so we gotta.
I do.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys. All right. So that's a good, feel good thing, really cool for our community. Uh, okay, we will move on unless anything else. I have one more thing and this is basically for all of us and anyone listening. We, uh, will close our survey tomorrow. So, um, you know, any parents that you have contact with, uh, please reach out. Ask them to fill out the survey. Um, sounds like we're, we'll talk about that more later, but, um, that's just something I wanted to men- mention to the community. So, uh, go ahead.
One last thing real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said I'd come back to.
You're totally good. We're gonna go relate back to what Director Canwisher was talking about, just as we enter into Thanksgiving week here this week. Hope everyone has a great, safe, relaxing, uh, Thanksgiving break. Take time to reflect and be proud of what we have, yeah. Reflect on what we have to be proud of in this district. So very thankful for everyone and as, as you mentioned as well. So all of you, thank you for what you do and enjoy your Thanksgiving as well. Very well deserved.
All right, moving on to consent agenda. We have, um, approval amendments, personnel, open enrollment, uh, acceptance of abstract of election and then the depository statements. Uh, are there any questions regarding this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
Please approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wogley to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of bills. Actually, we're, we're gonna hold on that. Um, so that is going to conclude our initial meeting tonight. So I am going to adjourn our first meeting. And I will open up our new meeting. And we will start with, um, call to order. Roll the call, please. Mrs. Damon?
Mrs. Wheeler?
Here.
Director Wogley?
Here. Here.
Mr. Canwisher?
Here.
Mr. Ayers?
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Here. Uh, next we will do administration of oath of office to our re-elected board members. Congratulations to the three of you.
Okay, I will read. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of Pleasant Valley Community School District Board Director, Director District One, as now and hereafter required by law. Mr. Ayers, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Pleasant Valley Community School District and Board Director, electing you, as now and hereafter required by law?
Congratulations, sir.
Mr. Canwisher, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Pleasant Valley Community School District Board Director, Director District Southern, as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Congratulations. Okay, and we will move on to election of president and vice president. We will start with president. You, we each have, um, two sheets of paper at our, uh, at our seat. And if you wouldn't mind, Mike, collecting, um, please make sure you initial your, um, your vote.
Unanimous, Mrs. Brockman?
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your support. And we, um, I will take you.
Oh, okay. Ms. Brockman, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of President, Board of Education, in the Pleasant Valley School District, as now and hereafter required by law?
I do. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And do I have to take a nomination then, Debbie? For president or no?
No.
Okay. All right. So now we will move on to vice president. So go ahead and fill out the other.
Okay. You get to take it from here.
Okay, and what, it was?
Mr. Ayers?
Okay. Can you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President, Board of Education, in Pleasant Valley Community School District, as now and hereafter required by law?
Thank you.
Okay, and then appointments of treasurer and secretary?
Devin, you are appointed as secretary, please.
From a vote.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so for secretary, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary, Board of Education, in Pleasant Valley Community School District, as now and hereafter required by law?
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. I do.
And then, uh, Debbie will, uh, swear in, um, John Moore as appointed as treasurer?
Yes. And just so all of you know, um, remember Kelsey Hettler was resigning here in December. So John is in her, is, will take over her position. So he'll be our new president.
All right, and, um, as you can see in our board minutes, we have the annual meeting, uh, that we have appointed, um, the, uh, offices and then also our information. So I will take a, I will take basically just a motion, um, that, uh, our annual meeting is approved. It's under section H there. So we are appointing Chief Financial Officer to be drawn upon the accounts meeting by Blackrock Bank and, uh,
One percent.
One percent for bank. Um, so it would be in our agenda, section eight. And then, um, we're also appointing Lainen Waterman as our district legal counsel. Part Three Times would be our newspaper of official publication. And I just need a motion that.
I move that we, that we approve, should I just say, for the, the annual meeting resolution?
Yes. Uh, so motion by Director Wogley.
Second.
Do I need a second? Okay. So motion by Director Wogley, second by, uh, Director Canwisher that, uh, the annual meeting is approved as presented. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you all for that. Uh, I did want to go back just a minute. And, uh, in our consent agenda, I wanted to point out that we did appoint, um, child abuse investigator, uh, alternate and outside investigator Jill Kenyon, as well as, uh, Lee McEwen as the alternate and Chuck Hammon, um, outside investigator. So I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. Thank you all for that. Okay, so we are now going to move on to, uh, approval of bills.
Before you, can I ask a question? I apologize. A question I have, I have for you, Mike. On the, on these, um, on the consent agenda, we approved the accounts. I just had a question about the trust accounts, basically. Those get invested in like securities or do they just?
Yeah, yeah, securities and US treasury notes and.
And who manages all of that?
It's part of the Iowa Schools Joint Investment Trust is the name of it. And it's like a statewide organization that many districts in the state participate in for investing their, uh, money.
And the financial managers for it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Sure.
All right, moving on to approval of bills. Uh, general fund, I will take a motion.
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in a total amount of four and thirty-one thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fourteen cents in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Director Wogley, second by Director Ayers, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nutrition fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in a total amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and ninety-eight cents in payment of invoice presented. Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Smith, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary, junior, high activity fund.
I move that elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in a total amount of a hundred and eighty-two dollars in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? High school activity fund.
I move the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of fourteen thousand, a hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Canwisher, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital projects fund.
I move that the capital project fund warrants be issued in a total amount of ten thousand, forty-one dollars and four cents in payment of invoice presented. Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Physical plant and equipment levy fund.
I move that physical plant and equipment levy fund warrants be issued in the total amount of sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Conkle, that physical plant and equipment levy fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Debt service fund.
I move that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of ninety-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogley, second by Director Conkle, that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal service fund.
I move the internal service fund warrants sixty-six seventy-nine to sixty-six eighty in ACH thirty-three twenty-six to thirty-three twenty-eight be issued in a total amount of two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars and forty-one cents in payment of invoices presented. Okay.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Ayers, that internal service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, trust fund.
I move that trust fund warrant be issued in a total amount of two hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-four cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wheeler, that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Um, moving on to the superintendent's search update, uh, just a real quick update. We still have, uh, three candidates that have started the application process. Um, in my discussion with our contact at Grand Meyer Leader Services, uh, he stated that that's very normal. Um, it's usually a very slow start. Uh, he would expect some of this to get completed, some of those applications to be completed over the Thanksgiving holiday. And maybe see a little bit more, um, interest in that timeframe. And then also another, uh, spike, maybe an interest over the Christmas holiday. And then, of course, uh, application deadline is January fourth. So, uh, so far, uh, they're very optimistic. Uh, they're talking to a lot of, uh, candidates. And, um, uh, he thinks it's going well. Uh, there have been no concerns or, uh, issues. Uh, he's very, uh, excited about the feedback on the survey, um, the amount of respondents. Um, we have five hundred and fifty-nine responses so far. So, uh, very, very good, uh, response. So we'll get a lot of good information, I think, from that survey, just, you know, being able to compile that information up. So, um, are there any questions regarding the search at this time?
I just have one. I just have one. So it, are they able to tell how many people look at the application or the posting at all? Do you know?
I don't know, I can ask though.
Just interested to see if they're, you know, people are seeing it and how many of them are not applying or applying.
Yeah. If you haven't been on Grunmeier's site, it's very interesting to go on there and see like the other timelines for other districts in Iowa. I think there's a few that uh we found out last week that will also be doing a superintendent search, so. Most are smaller schools than us, but there's, there's, there's one in particular that was a larger district, so.
Yeah, I guess I would be curious to know if after the, you know, holiday break, we s- we don't see an uptick in interest. What's their plan? Do they start aggressively doing passive sourcing for candidates and, and really leveraging their networks to reach out? What does that look like? So we can kind of be prepared.
Uh, something that he did ask me is that if we had any particular candidates that we wanted them to reach out to. That, you know, that may not actually be considering it, but we think, you know what? It might be a good option or candidate, so. If there's anyone that you think of or know of that would be interested, anyone you know of, Brian, so.
I just talked to, I can't, which was the district that we talked to and they, they, they just came up their decision and they're going with Ray and Associates? Do you remember which one that was?
Oh, um.
It's not very far from me, but I can't remember which one.
Was it North Scott?
I think it's North Scott.
I think it was North Scott. Okay.
When we were talking.
Yeah.
But they chose Ray and Associates as their superintendent search.
I don't know where they're at, yeah. They may have chose them, whether they move forward this year or next year, that's, that's the question mark. But they don't know the answer to it.
Like he didn't have a end date yet.
I think that they were just starting the process and hiring them for what's to come.
Okay.
The unknown.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so I will continue, uh Debbie and I will continue to keep you uh updated on any new developments. Uh, every Monday we get a report and uh then at our December meeting, Shannon will stand here to uh talk to us about the findings of the survey. Uh, so, moving on uh to new business, the high school course of study recommendations? Yes, I don't see Mr. Holly here, so it looks like it's up to you.
Yep, and it was going to be at me all along, so. Um, okay, so there's a couple things that we're going to go over together this evening. The first is the PVHS course proposal, so it's the packet that looks like this. If you want to take a peek at that. I'm gonna reference my notes here. So, this document includes both a concurrent course that we would like to add to our um course handbook, as well as four other classes, and I will go through each one and talk a little bit about the rationale for adding the course.
This is just on our, in our board packet, Bernie?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So it's online.
So the first course listed that we would like um to be considered for adding to our course handbook is our nurse, is the nurse aide class. This course is part of um the Healthcare Academy classes at EICC and would be a concurrent enrollment option for our students. Um, so eventually, we would love to offer the academy its, in its entirety. Um, but for several reasons, we are, we are proposing just one course right now. The one course would help us stair-step the academy offering to our students. Um, and adding this particular course will actually get us one step closer. In that Healthcare Academy, we're actually really close to offering the full um first year of courses for the academy. We already offer medical terminology and um math for healthcare professionals. Those are approved courses with the EMT track already that are also reflected in this academy pathway as well. Um, we, our students would need to go to the urban campus in EICC for the lab experiences, or perhaps Betendorf if they're able to fill the current position that they have. Um, they really struggled with staffing this year, and so they actually haven't been able to offer it in-house. Um, but if they are, they're willing to work with Pleasant Valley. Our students do prefer classes at a high school, there's a trend in that. Um, but for students who are really passionate about pursuing CNA or any kind of um medical field in the future, this would be a great option for them. We do know that we will have interest. We project that we are going to be able to fill a section both semesters. Um, and we also have several students who are taking advantage of the free summer option of this course. Um, these are students who are very interested but don't have room um in their current schedules because of extracurriculars or other electives that they're interested in taking. So we do anticipate that this will be um very popular and is in line with student interest um that we get through their interactions with Zello, which is our career counseling platform.
Right.
Bernie, could you share a long-term what the vision might be for this academy?
Yeah, we'd love to move it, we'd love to have the whole academy, but we'd love to move it on our campus. In doing so, there's some infrastructure considerations. We have to meet certain specifications for the lab setup as well as classroom space. Um, however, there are a lot of grants out there that we can apply for to outfit a space that will meet our needs. Um, the other tricky part with this is finding somebody who's passionate about teaching young nursing students. The requirements for that is that they do have their RN and that they have so many years of experience in the field. Um, and finding somebody who's willing to do that, um, at most typically a pretty dramatic pay decrease um has proven to be pretty difficult, so. I know um our board is well-connected, and so when we get to that point, we'll probably be tapping into any resources or networks that you may have to try to find somebody. Um, but that's ultimately the vision, is to bring our CNA program in-house. Any questions about this course?
I, it couldn't come at a better time. I just went to a seminar last week regarding the, just the nursing home care in the state. And it is so uh challenging. And one of the reasons why is because there's not enough staffing, and the area where there's the most vacancy in staffing is actually in CNAs. And so, uh, this is really good that I'm happy that we're doing this because it really will set our students up for um being certified so they can possibly go on and help with this, these vacancies that are currently in our state.
So you, the prerequisite is that they have to be sixteen years of age prior to the start of the course. We do have students throughout the region who complete their CNA while they're still in high school, and they're working in CNA positions after school over the summers because it is a really high need area. And for a high school kid, it's a pretty great wage.
It really is, it really is.
And it's a great experience if they do under nursing down the road.
Absolutely.
It's just amazing.
Um, it's in the packet, but I forgot to mention, these are just um for a discussion this evening. I will ask for approval at the next board meeting. The next course is Advanced Baking. There is a little note underneath the box there that this course will actually replace our International Foods course. We have seen over time that numbers in that course have declined, and um students are actually asking for more experience in baking. And so this is in response to student um requests and student interest to replace Advanced Baking with, um, or I'm sorry, to replace International Foods with Advanced Baking. And in doing so, um, we're not going to require any more teaching force. But if we were to keep International Foods there, that may cause us a staffing need. So we're trying to take that into consideration with this. It is a one semester course, and it will be offered first and second semester.
Do they need people to help with grading for that?
Oh my gosh, the, um, I have a little bit more in depth here on the things that they're going to be covering. Yeast breads and artisan techniques, pastry arts, advanced cakes, frostings and decorating, specialty desserts and plating.
I think we could all line up for it.
I'll let our FCS teachers know that they have some very willing taste testers.
Yeah, they could cook on Mondays though.
I will let them know. Um, the next course on um this page is called Digital Storytelling. This would be a senior elective in the area of ELA. Um, it would meet the ELA requirements for our seniors. Prerequisites is just successful completion of English eleven. And this would be a second semester only course. This would be offered, um, so we're going to be offering journalism first semester. This would be the second semester offering for ELA. Very cool course. Maureen Dyer is the one who proposed this course. Um, and really what it is, it's a multimedia journalism course. And it's all about um being able to create compelling video and audio content um to be able to effectively communicate in that realm. Um, lot of cool ideas in the course layout. One thing I'm excited about too, we've talked about Governor Reynolds' push for work-based learning and how that definition has updated within the last year. Um, Maureen has a really cool idea for a culminating project that would actually be a wonderful experience to students, serve our community and count for work-based learning as well. And the idea is that she would want to partner with a senior living facility. And one of the culminating projects would be that students interview, that in, interview an individual that they're partnered up with, a senior, and they create a digital story about that person's life.
Very cool.
So cool. Yeah, so we're really excited about this possibility. Are there any questions? Okay, the last two go together. And these are actually two courses. They're not currently courses, but they are two options that previous to this year, we were able to offer our students without it officially being in the course book. So, these are strands of our AP Physics classes. And basically what this is, is that co- the co- college board who um is in charge of all things AP, they changed the rules and have reduced the availability of the test prep materials for Physics C Mechanics and Physics C Electricity and Magnetism. It used to be that if you were enrolled in AP Physics one or two, you could access these test prep materials and take this strand without actually being enrolled in the specific course. They've changed the rules and therefore the availability of the test prep resources for students. And so you'll notice that instead of a half of a credit, this is actually a point one-two-five. We are offering these as independent studies only um for students to help prepare for APC, the APC exams. It has to be on the students' transcripts for them to be able to participate in the assessment. And so that's one of the reasons why we're, we're going this route. Currently, Mr. Spengenberg, he does help these students prep for these strands of assessments if they are interested. So it's not going to change what we're doing internally or require more staffing. It's basically just putting the class on the students' transcripts um so that they can take that assessment. So again, these are things that we've been able to offer in the past. Rules have changed and we're just trying to follow suit. Any questions about the high school course proposal?
So everything you have there, I mean, looks good. I have one question, so I've looked at a couple other school districts that are starting to get into like cosmetology and stuff too uh for students, I don't know if that's something like in this area that uh schools would be interested in doing. Um, I know, I think it's Burlington or West Burlington was one of the schools that stood out, like they've started a program down there. Um, I don't know if that's something that we would even have in this area. I don't think there's any other school district in our area that does it. Um, but might be something that we might want to look into, because I know that, I think they put out something with like apprentice program for it. Um, through the different uh hairstylists or whatever. But um, I know that's one thing that I've, I've started to see more uh from some other districts. So it might be something that students might be interested in.
Yeah.
Next year we'll go through that and, you know, trying to gauge their interests.
We can certainly take a look at our um career counseling. Um, software, it's Zello, which will indicate areas of interest for students. Typically, we want to align, like you're, you're saying, with what students are interested in, so that's certainly something I could look at.
But I just didn't know if that was something that's in that program or not, so.
Yeah, I'll take a look, I'll let you know.
Good idea.
Any other questions?
I just noticed the board's not as interested in the magnetism. I'm excited about the physics.
Doesn't taste quite as good, you know? Okay, so up next, I am, am going to talk a little bit about the EICC course approval proposal. So every year, we do have to bring our concurrent enrollment options before the board for your approval. This approval, once it's approved, will also go to EICC for their records. Nothing is actually changing from last year, except for the addition of the CNA class on the last page um in the box here. So that is the only addition. Also, um, as you know, we sunsetted the ASL program. You will notice that that's no longer listed as other courses that students can enroll in because we've sunsetted the program due to staffing. The only other thing I would mention in terms of our certificate program and other concurrent enrollment offerings is that the Engineering Technology Certificate, which is on the bottom of the first page, we were notified by EICC that the coursework of the certificate program is changing, but they haven't had a chance to finalize that yet. Unfortunately, our timelines just didn't match up this year, so we needed to bring this before you for approval before January, and they have yet to get us those updates. So what we're requesting there is that we can go ahead and update the certificate coursework for the Engineering Technology um, once we do have those updates from EICC.
The sign language program that was sunsetted, did the students that needed to finish their designated amount of years, were they all able to do that?
They were able to move through, yep.
Yep.
The communication would have gone out, not this past summer, but the summer before, about the courses that students needed to enroll in last year and this year in order to finish. We do have some students enrolled now, um, who will get.
Your shortage area.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Did, I know the teacher was here and then went to EICC, right?
He did.
And is he still there, or is that?
I haven't heard.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, so we will vote um on this next.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the uh State School Board Convention from last week.
I just want to go through is, when we leave the conference, there's always a lot of great things that transpire and we don't always get chances, we're all driving back in separate cars. But just to take a minute to go through and just kind of share maybe three highlights that you took away from the conference that we can think about as a board, uh to make sure we're doing the best we can for our kids and students every single day, so. Um, just whoever wants to start first to share a few things out, Molly had that good idea to do that when we were coming back, so. Just share three highlights or two highlights, whatever you want to share.
I can start, I'll just go around. Um, so I, I was participating on behalf of the board at the delegate assembly. This was my first experience attending the conference. Um, so I would say one of the highlights of my two-day experience was just being able to participate in that and to listen to um, the kind of debating and the discussions across all the different school boards on, you know, even things like the wording of one of the regulations. What was, you know, important to the rural districts compared to some of the districts, you know, more closely aligned to us. Um, but knowing that at the end of the assembly, all of us were, were aligned on what the priorities were and are. Um, and really it was interesting to see, no matter what size your school is, how much of an impact the voucher system has had on every single school. It's very, you know, unfortunate, but um it was really just good to hear and be a part of that, so thank you for that opportunity. Um, so that was one. I would say two for me was both of the um keynote speakers, I thought were excellent. And I've gone to a ton of different conferences in my career, you know, for HR, right? Um, excellent keynote speakers. Um, the golden circle, the Simon Siniat golden circle with the why and making sure you kind of always are thinking about your why when you're, you know, having those bad days, when maybe people are frustrating you and you're overwhelmed, just remembering, you know, why we do this, why we're here, what our role is and, 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 and kind of looking for that motivation. and, 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 and kind of looking for that motivation, it was just a great reinforcing um, discussion for that. And then the second keynote speaker, um, in her whole story about, you know, how we really have the ability, all of us um, to impact just one person with what we do, so just really motivating, I would say.
Um, I would have to echo what uh, Director Wheeler said in regards to the keynote, I mean, the keynote speakers were great. Um, I, I got a lot out of them, what they were, what they were doing, the first one. They did, you know, he did a lot of um, activities, which I'm not a huge fan of all the time. However, they weren't as bad as I thought they were going to be. So I did, I did enjoy that, um, and then the, the second individual was great as well. Um, the first session that I went to was about AI, which I don't know why I chose that, but I did, just because I think that I, I know the least about AI. Um, and to hear uh, school districts around the area that have implemented that mainly in their high schools. Um, and that it's always a work in progress, you know, it's, nothing's ever going to be, this is the policy, this is how we're gonna do it, because it's always changing. And so it was, it was kind of refreshing to know that you can always go back to the drawing board. Uh, when developing plans, uh, policies, anything that has to do with AI, so. That was nice too. And then we went to a new superintendent um, session, which um, was good to kind of reinforce what we had been hearing from the firm that we've, we've hired. Um, a lot of the, the same information, um, I think, did you go to that? Um, I don't know if there's anything that you stuck out for you for that one, but.
Um, I, that was a good session, I think the big takeaway was again, just kind of that like motivation of knowing that there are other schools maybe do more strategic planning than we do, so is that something we want to think about in the future? You know, just kind of looking at what other people do and getting motivated by it.
But I appreciated being able to go to the conference, I think, um, I, ASB always puts on a great program for a lot of different um, topics, so.
Um, ditto on the keynote speakers, I've gone to the conference every year that I've been on the board. And these were by far my favorite keynote speakers that got there. Um, and I went to, I guess, just finishing up on the keynote speaker, um, the the person that spoke second, Anne Marie Anderson, I believe her name was. Um, her story about her son and how her son being connected in the high school resulted in improved grade performance and improved family dynamic at home and success. And I think that has value to our district because we have a large district. And the bigger the school is, the more challenging it is, I think, for students to feel connected. And I think we do a great job, but it's something to kind of just always be aware of. Because having a student that has, feels like they belong in our school will not only impact them, but make our school community healthier and also impact their home life. Um, um, so I thought that was a, just a great reminder. The breakout sessions I went to, um, I went to one that talked about bullying harassment and the policy changes with the laws that were implemented. And we were right on track with all of that, so that was fantastic to hear. Um, I went to one, um, with HR. Um, again, it was a good session, um, and you know, some of these things is just nice to be like, we're doing good, we're doing okay here. Um, the last one I went to was with Anne Marie and she spoke about media. Um, and that was also um, just interesting to hear her perspective as a reporter. And when she's doing interviews, um, and things like that, and just kind of different things that come up when managing media and media relations. Um, so I appreciate the opportunity to go, it's great for being a member of a school board, but also I find it really rewarding, it's just a personal development.
Uh, so I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said, but uh, I went, I ended up going to a couple with strategic planning, which was bad planning on my part. But they both sounded interesting. Um, something I took away from that is I agree, you know, we can maybe do, uh, I think we have a plan as a district, but we maybe formalize it more, I think we can maybe do a little better job formalizing that. Um, but what, what was really cool in both of those uh, was how uh, the boards that were rep- were presenting, were presenting with their superintendent. And it was very cool because it was obvious that, you know, we have this plan, but we are in it together and we've developed this plan together and it came from basically the ground up. We didn't say this is our strategic plan. We asked, you know, what, what do we need to do better and how do we do it, and then they built the plan off that. But it was cool because, um, I feel as a board, we're very fortunate to work very closely with our superintendent and we support each other. And um, I saw that with both of those uh, schools that were presenting their strategic plans, so thank you for um, how much you've worked with us. Um, but uh, uh, so that, that was, that was it was nice to see and then I felt, I also felt that, that, you know, hey, we, we, we work very closely with our superintendent. Um, let's see, um. And then the keynote speaker, you know, I, you know, we talk about keeping students at the center of all the decisions and really, you know, that, that hit at home for us with the, with the gal that, that talked about her son. And then, um, yeah, oh, and the, the other thing I couldn't read my own writing there for a minute. Uh, the, the, I, I noticed. Um, I noticed that uh, in a couple of the sessions, uh, it sounds like the school board is part of committees or there's actually committees within the school board. So, um, that's something maybe we need to think about more going forward, maybe to take some workload off um, our superintendent or anything we can do. If there's some type of task that, you know, hey, um, if Brian says, can we form a committee on with, can the board form a committee and bring me ideas or that type of thing? It's not something we've done in the past, but we have a board of seven. And you know, if there's a particular issue that, you know, we can help with, maybe that's an option. So, that's what I have, so I'll let you.
Um, of course, the keynote speakers were excellent and I won't uh, repeat that, but they was really good. Then um, on Wednesday afternoon, actually Adrian and I went to a seminar on disagreeing better, the art and science of constructive disagreement. And it actually was very good and uh, it was very interesting to analyze just the whole aspect of disagreeing. And what, why, what are your viewpoints when you disagree with somebody else? And how do you try and get into the mind of others and how they're, how they're thinking about things as well?
Taking into these spouses, right?
Huh? And yeah, exactly, so I said, I'm gonna take this not only in my professional, but my personal life, so. Um, but it was really good, she talked about this thing called naive realism and of course being receptive and then constructive receptiveness as well. And so it was just, it was actually like a two-hour session that really went, did a deep dive on disagreeing and how you can disagree but still uh, be respectful. And so luckily our board doesn't seem to have that, which is wonderful, but I know that in other uh, times in your professional personal life you can. And this is a good sort of lesson on how you can do it better. Then, um, I went to a really, like, one of, one of the best sessions I've ever been to and it's basically um, called uh, it's about pop property taxes and all about property taxes and hot property taxes. How are they determined, what types of, um, or, or, or how do they fund schools? And uh, all the formulas and this is really important because this last year, if you may or may not know, there were three attempts at changing property taxes and doing property tax reform, which of course would affect our school district. And so it didn't pass in any of the three versions, but I can almost guarantee you it's gonna come back again this next legislative session. And uh, so a lot of people, especially people who are at school boards, people who uh, govern municipalities, uh, are a little bit concerned over what that's going to mean. And even the governor recently said that if there is property tax reform, we all have to be used to knowing that services may be um, services that we normally expected or have expected, um, may have, may be changed or may be changing. Whatever that means, it's a very vague expression, but of course it has all of us on high alert. And I know that during this next legislative session, I'll be watching uh, very um, keenly on what's happening with the property tax bills and how that moves through different committees. And I sure, I'm sure Mike will as well, because this could have an impact on school districts across the state. And when you couple that with the fact that we have three hundred and fifty million dollars going to private school vouchers, which is a huge topic of conversation at the IASB meeting, I think everybody's a little bit concerned. So he did a really good job of just breaking down how property taxes are um, uh, determined, what the funding formulas are, and then can give me better perspective as I look at these new bills, how that's gonna possibly impact schools. Um, so it was just really good. And our, and then after that, of course, I decided, well, since I've already talked about property taxes, uh, I went to a seminar or a uh, a group meeting on, it's called Three Districts, One Challenge, it's lessons in budget resilience. And these were three different districts that, one of them being Central DeWitt, which is not very far from us, far from here, that basically was like, oh my god, we're, we're gonna have a huge budget issue here, like we are not getting the money in that we thought, our enrollment is down. And it was kind of like an aha moment, like what do we do? And it's, it's things that, you know, we are, we take for granted, Mike, because Mike is so good at this. But when you hear what these uh, three districts, what they went through, like where they all sudden literally were like, oh my god, this is gonna happen to us like in this next year, what do we do here, how do we take care of it? And it's in a situation that certainly gave me palpitations because I don't ever want to be in that situation. And so it was really interesting to see, see how they navigate, each of these districts, how they navigated through that process of okay, how are we gonna make these tough decisions, we have to make it so quickly? And what are the different aspects, and I think one of the biggest lessons that I, that I learned is that the moment that you, you, this happens, which hopefully will never happen in Pleasant Valley, but if it ever did, the number one that um, lesson is you have to be transparent with the community, with your board members, with everybody, you have to be transparent and come up with a plan. And you gotta get all the, the um, financial minds in the room, determine what your course of action is going to be and be very transparent. And ideally, uh, one of the questions I asked was, well, what are things that we can be doing as a school board now to, to make sure that we don't have that aha moment? And they were like, you know, just constantly, they said you should be doing projections every single year, look at your like three or four projections and what that looks like. You don't want to be looking at projections just for like the next six months or the next year, you want to look at it three to four years down the road. And um, they said that since we really are unsure what's gonna happen because it's new property tax bill that potentially may or may not pass, we have to be even more sort of budget resilient, because we don't know what's coming down that line. So it was, it was all financial stuff, it was really, really enlightening.
So these are like perfect, I'm glad I'm last. So I want to pick up, I had planned on it, but uh, Director Wheeler and Director Brockman's suggestion of strategic planning, I think is something we should seriously consider. The trend of declining enrollment voucher program consuming dollars that otherwise might be available for SSA, two percent SSA last year. These are like a clearly a cloud forming on the horizon that we probably need to have a discussion about and how we want to put mitigation plans or contingency plans we want to have in place. So I, I'm in on that if we decide to go that route. So one of the sessions I attended was on sharing your finances with the public, which for me, I think is gonna be really important. I can't do it, you all have to decide to do it at the administration level. But most districts or many districts have their own business office page and they publish metrics. And it's trending metrics, not snapshot metrics. I think that's important as we get into these periods where we're gonna have to do something financially for that data already to be out there, so as a dir- director, I can just say, yeah, the business office page is out there, check out this trend on this chart. It may address the question or concern you've got and like, maybe you can take that up with your legislator if you're concerned about that. So that's one thing and I'll share details on it, I won't get into it now, but I'll share like what they, they did in those slides. The more important, more interesting thing, and by the way, Heather was in both the sessions with me, coincidentally, both seemed interested apparently. Was Iowa City's marketing program, so what in effect the legislature did by implementing a voucher program is implementing a competition, a public versus private competition. And whether we like it or not, that's the situation we're in, so Iowa City said, that's fine, we'll create a marketing campaign to address it then. And um, one of the things that struck me is, is being a John Deere guy, what they did is very much what our corporation does as a business. So if, when we decide we go down this route wanting to brand the, the district and we want to start going through marketing, we should pull some folks in to have just a conversation about how it happens in private industry and then, you know, you all have to sort out what that means here in the district. It means more cost upfront, but the way Iowa City's handling their ROI is they're measuring the students that come in against that. So right, the dollars that come in with the students that they otherwise would have lost offsets that. And I can't remember their slogan, do, I was trying to look it up. Game on, and every video starts with the same music. At the end, every video has the game on slogan, so that's their slogan for this year at least. It was really impressive, it was really impressive. One of the downsides is they have a staff member who does all the awesome video. Uh, but I did suggest, first of all, Bernie, one of the, yeah. I know students who have graduated from here or just at Iowa City who are home often, that are actually studying film and that sort of stuff. So we may be able to leverage some of them if uh, or when we decide to go down that route. I know Heather doesn't have a ton of time, but I suspect this is gonna become important. And my view on this marketing concept is, we can either be proactive again about it, or we can wait for one of the private schools to do it and then we can do it. So it is, again, administrative call, but um, another area I, I adjust some consideration.
And actually to your point, when we were at the school board meeting, we, I met with people from um, North Scott and then the superintendent from Bettendorf was there as well. And all of the districts around here all had declining enrollment, nobody has an increased enrollment this year. Scott has lost, Bettendorf has lost, and PB has lost students.
Heather, did you want to add anything?
No, I just, keep going with what Doug said. We had very similar interests, but I really loved how many of the sessions really woven the communications piece because it, it's gotta be so intentional now as the world changes and it's so much more than just Facebook posts or a pretty website. There's so much strategy behind it and I've loved the examples of the boards working with the district to make those things happen, really neat.
There was an element I forgot, so they had a district level marketing campaign and it got to be interesting enough that the public was asking questions about schools and so then schools themselves drove their own little marketing campaigns that sort of spawned off the the branding from the top level, I thought that was really interesting. And they're all shorts, they're not like five-minute videos, right, nobody watches five-minute videos apparently anymore, so.
Yeah, it was neat to see how they got their whole district involved and created that branding kit so that any building could take it and run without putting more work on the business office, which was really neat.
Things, and I'm sure this gets you very excited about going some year.
Sounds like there's gonna be a little bit of some interns for marketing.
And then Brian, I kind of skipped over you, I guess, sorry.
No, totally good.
You bring it all together.
Yeah, I mean, I, overall, I looked at one, I went, when it's called construction planning A to Z, you might say, why would I go to construction planning A to Z? That's all we've been doing for the last number of years. But I, I, I went to it because I know we have a PEPAL vote coming in March and just wanted to see it from their perspective, you know, what are some of these we can think about in terms of making sure our PEPAL passes in March? Because of the impact that that has on our district and how it has handled us all the way through this process in terms of construction and different things that we do. Um, and I think just overall, again, it's just being transparent, letting people know how PEPAL does not increase our taxes, it's a no taxing, but the impact that it has on our students every single day is bum beyond anything else we've ever done without people going to go bond and then that does increase our taxes. So some good takeaways on that, the Iowa City one, I was, I was in that one as well with the two of you. And I think you had, we just bought two new box trucks and one of the things is, you know, did you put our logo on the side? Do you put your phone number on the side, do you put kids' pictures on the side? I mean, that thing travels our district, I don't know how many times a day, all over the place. And just reminding people that you just, the great things that we are doing and it's a great way to remind people that, hey, have pride in who we are in Pleasant Valley. So that was kind of my takeaway from the Iowa City one. And I did come back and tell Bernie, hey, she was showing me that class, I'm like, boy, do we have a great project we can do with those kids, so spot on with you on that one there. Um, and then the strategic one pager, I, I was in that one. And uh, Dubuque had a nice one pager that the next time when we meet as a director's team, we will look at that one pager and it's just very simple. And the superintendent and the directors, just wherever they go, they have a stack of those with them and they're just always handing them out and saying, here's what we do in Pleasant Valley. So we'll talk about that. And in closing, I just want to say, you know, I'm so proud to be with all of you, um, the seven you are. What you do for our kids every single day and having, me having the opportunity to serve all of you has been a real honor. And it was just a great time to uh, just enjoy the camaraderie, the conversations, what we do for our kids and to hear, pat yourselves on the back for what we do well, but uh, then just our last in stories were. But uh then just our last stories were very appreciative and just so proud of all of you, what we do, so, thank you.
All right, appreciate everyone sharing there. Uh so with that, we're gonna move on to fin- financials. All right, so we'll start out with the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six F B R C request for modified supplemental amount for open enrollment.
All right, um actually, the next two agenda items are both related to the application that Heather has up on the screen here. Called the S B R C, which again, S B R C in this case stands for School Budget Review Committee. This is an application that is due on December first, so it's coming due here in just a week or so. This is an application that we complete each year, which allows us to get modified supplemental amount, which again, modified supplemental amount is basically additional spending authority in our general fund. There are three components to this S B R C application. The first one, the first part on here is for increased enrollment. Unfortunately, again, our enrollment is down. The certified enrollment that we took October first is down eighty-four point three students from what it was a year ago. So because of that, this first part is not applicable to us again this year, since we do not have increasing enrollment. If we did have increasing enrollment, this is the thing that's called on-time funding, which we um were receiving in the years that we did have increased enrollment. But again, that's not applicable for this year. The, this agenda item, the motion that we're asking you to make for this current agenda item is in regard to open enrollment out. And what this is, is we have fifty-five point four zero of F T E of students in the district who are open enrolled out to other districts this year, but they were not on our certified headcount a year ago. So we did not get funding for them, since they were not on our certified headcount a year ago. But what this allows us to do with this motion is get the spending authority, the modified supplemental amount um for those fifty-five point four students. As we've talked about in the past, it is always prudent, pretty much always prudent, to never turn a, get down a chance to get additional spending authority. As Dr. Wagle, I believe, or Dr. or Mr. Kenwisher was talking about earlier. You don't wanna get in, ever get into a situation where your spending authority goes into the negative, that is one of like one of the worst things you can do, it's against Iowa law. If you do get into that situation, you have to work out, do a what's called a workout plan with the School Budget Review Committee to tell them how you're gonna get your spending authority back into the positive. So that is why you rarely, if ever, turn down a ge- chance to get additional spending authority. So again, this item here, for our fifty-five point four oh F T E of open enrolled out students this year. If you multiply, multiply that times the current year S C P P you see on the screen there, which is the state cost per pupil. Because open enrollment is based on the state cost per pupil amount rather than district cost per pupil amount. The state cost per pupil amount is seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Our district cost per pupil amount this year is eight thousand eighty-one dollars. But again, open enrollment is based on the state cost per pupil amount. So if you multiply that fifty-five point four oh students times that current state cost per pupil amount, and we get funding for professional development and teacher leadership and those things. The total amount that we are allowed to request for modified supplemental amount for open enrollment out this year, and they say to round it down to the nearest dollar. So when we complete this application, the amount that we'll be requesting for supple- M S A would be four hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars of M S A that we would be requesting. Um so.
Can I see what?
Yeah, sure.
So um I think I missed the S C P P last time we did this.
Okay.
Um my question is, is that like an average across all the districts in the state, is that where that number comes from, or where does it come from?
Well, you may recall, um this kind of gets to the Davenport issue from a few years ago, where Davenport was right at the state cost per pupil amount. But Pleasant Valley and a lot of other districts in the state had a higher district cost per pupil amount. Some of that has to do with a thing called permanent allowable growth, which um had, which was available many years ago. Districts didn't have to request it, Davenport never did request it, and I'm I'm not meaning to pick on Davenport, I think that was just a decision that they made at that time. It's funded by proper, it was funded by entirely by property tax. Um Pleasant Valley did apply for permanent allowable growth uh many years ago. I believe it was to, when we built on one of our additions to the high school, it was helped to help fund the additional staff that were needed for custodial positions and stuff like that of the high school. So anyway, that's why a lot of districts in the state have a higher per pupil amount than other districts in the state do. The state's been trying to equalize that over the last few years by adding five dollars or your ten dollars per year to the state cost per pupil amount to try to narrow that gap between some districts are at for district cost per pupil and what other districts are at for state cost per pupil.
Great, thank you.
That's great. So um I don't know if we wanna go ahead and um entertain a motion for this agenda item as related to the open enrollment out. So if we wanna go ahead and um if the board wants to make that motion, and then we'll talk about the other motion related to the S B R C request.
I'll take the motion.
I move that the district's administration be authorized to submit a twenty twenty-five, twenty-six request to the School Budget Review Committee for a modified supplemental amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review for open enrolled out students who are not included in the district's previous year certified enrollment count.
Second.
Motion by Director Puncle, second by Director Kenwisher, that the district's administration to be authorized to submit a twenty twenty-five, twenty-six request to the School Board Review Committee for a modified supplemental amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars, or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review for open enrolled students who were not included in the district's previous year certified enrollment count. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wagle?
Yes.
Yes.
Puncle?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Ares?
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
All right. Thanks, Heather. So the other part of this application to the S B R C has to do with limited English proficiency students that are in the districts that have been receiving services for beyond five years. So for this year, we have five total students in that situation, where they've been receiving the limited English proficiency instruction for beyond five years. Three of those, as you can see on the screen there, are at the intermediate level, which is a point two one weighting. And then two of those students are at the intensive level, which is a point two six weighting. So on this one, this one's based on your district cost per pupil, not the state cost per pupil. So you can see that's the eight thousand eighty-one dollars per pupil that I mentioned earlier. So if you multiply that out times the number of students times the weighting, this would be a request to the School Budget Review Committee for nine thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars of modified supplemental amount for additional spending authority that the district can request for next year. So again, we would recommend applying for that to the S B R C. That part of it. Take any questions, otherwise we just need a motion for this also.
I just, you know, those numbers, the intermediate and the intensive are based upon the ALPA twenty-one test that our students who are E L students take, based upon where they come in, and it determines where they are in that level um in terms of the weighting.
I move that the district's administration be authorized to submit a twenty twenty-five, twenty-two-six request to the School Budget Review Committee to a modified supplemental amount of nine thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars, or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review related to the E L program for students who have exceeded five years of waiting that are included in the fall twenty twenty-five certified enrollment headcount.
Second.
Motion by Director Wagle, second by Director Ayers, that the district's administration be authorized to submit a twenty twenty-five, twenty-six request to the School Budget Review Committee for a modified supplemental amount of nine thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars, or the amount determined by the Iowa Department of Education after review related to the E L program for students who have exceeded five years of waiting that are included in the fall twenty twenty-five certified enrollment headcount. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wagle?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Puncle?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Ares?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Ready for the audit report?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, um so first I wanna thank Heather, she has the cover of the audit report here.
So pretty.
Up on the screen. Every year, she always gives me some great pictures to put on this cover of our annual comprehensive financial report, so. Great picture showing all the great things going on here in the district. So um this, and on on the table tonight, you have a document, and I apologize, I wasn't able to get this into the board packet. But this is kind of a summary of the highlights of the um annual comprehensive financial report, and I'll go through that here in just a minute. If anybody would happen to want a bound copy of the actual one hundred and sixteen-page annual comprehensive financial report, I do have five copies from our auditors, and I could get more if we needed to. Um but otherwise, you have the PDF copy of it here in the board packet. It's really exciting reading if anybody does want to read all one hundred and sixteen pages of it.
It is on file here at the district office, right?
Yes.
So we know where to find it.
Yes, yes, definitely.
In case your car gets stuck in the snow.
Yes.
All right, so anyway, um going through the document that's on the table here tonight, that kind of summarizes the annual comprehensive financial report. The the first part on here just again talks about why we have an annual audit, and basically, it's required by Iowa law. Chapter eleven, section six of the Code of I- Code of Iowa does require an annual audit performed by a C P A firm by, for every school district in the state of Iowa. So it is required, um and then also there's some other um federal codes that require an audit too, if you get federal money from the federal government. What is an annual comprehensive financial report? Well, this will be the tenth consecutive year that the district has done an annual comprehensive financial report. An annual comprehensive financial report is, it provides a more thorough and a detailed presentation of a school district's financial condition, and goes beyond the minimum information necessary for fair presentation of a district's books in con- in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. So our current auditors, Bond Second Fromm, they're the ones who do our audit, um are the ones who recommended to us doing this more detailed annual comprehensive financial report ten years ago. So this is the tenth year that we've been doing one of these reports. We will, again, for the tenth year in a row, be applying to the Association of School Business Officials International for their certi- Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and to the G F O A, the Government Finance Officers Association. Will also be applying to them for the tenth year in a row, to get those awards that we've gotten the previous nine years for the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. There is a fee to both of those organizations for applying for it. For ASBO, the fee is a lot of sixty-five dollars, which is no change from the previous years. For the Government Finance Officers Association, the fee this year is one thousand three hundred and forty dollars. And I believe last year it was twelve hundred and twenty dollars, so they did raise their fee by about a hundred and twenty dollars or so over previous years. But as you'll see in number two on my document that I put on the board table here, why apply for the Certificate of Excellence? The reasons are, we receive constructive feedback each year on our annual comprehensive financial report from each of those organizations, ASBO and G F O A, to help us improve the clarity and completeness of the future annual comprehensive financial reports. Earning the C O A, C O E, kind of getting to what Doug was talking about earlier, honors our school district's transparency and full disclosure to people in the public um in our school district. Receiving, also receiving the Certificate of Excellence may help strengthen our district's presentation for bond issuance. It is our belief, and our financial advisors' belief, Matt J- uh Matt Gillespie from Piper Sandler, that you are more likely to get a lower interest rate on borrowing money if you do um prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. So that's one of the very big reasons we're doing this each year. Um, a couple other things I I wanna highlight in the annual comprehensive financial report. Um, well, number five on the thing that I passed out here, the auditor's opinion on the financial statements. It is the goal of every audit that the school districts get to get what's called an unqualified opinion, excuse me, an unmodified opinion on the, on the, on financial statements. What that means is, the auditors are saying that our financial statements, exact words, are presented fairly in all material respects. The financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities for each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the school district as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. So basically, they're just saying that our financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That's the goal of every audit. We did receive that um unmodified opinion again for the um audit for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh number seven on here, the district-wide financial statements. This is where we start getting into the numbers that are actually on the financial statements. The main thing I just wanted to point out on the district-wide financial statements is, our total net assets at the dis- excuse me, net position in the district increased by eight million four hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars last year. So a nine point nine percent increase in our total net position in the district for last year. So that's a positive thing, that our net position in the district is going up. Number eight on here, the fund financial statements. The fund financial statements are um most similar to the monthly financial report that I present to you each month. Um these would match up um number-wise with the June monthly financial reports that I would have presented to you uh back in September. The main things to point out on here, again, getting into the numbers, are the total governmental funds balance at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five was thirty-four million six hundred and eighty-three thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars, which is a decrease of fourteen million nine thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars, or twenty-eight point eight percent decrease from the previous year. Well, the reason, the main reason for the decrease in our governmental fund balance has to do with, we've been spending that money that we borrowed, which went into our capital projects fund on the building addition at the high school. So while it may look negative that it went down twenty-eight point eight percent, it's really not, that's really a negative thing, because we're just using the money that we borrowed to pay off um that borrowing and to pay the bills for the high school building addition. So that's the reason for the decrease on that. The general funds unassigned fund balance, so the unreserved fund balance, did increase during the year by one million seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars, or seventeen point three percent. So that's a positive thing. Again, as I mentioned just a second ago, the fund balance in our capital's projects fund decreased by about sixteen and a half million dollars, or fifty-eight percent during the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. But again, that was because we were using the money that we borrowed to pay the bills for the high school building addition. The student nutrition fund, or school nutrition fund net position during the twenty-four, twenty-five year fiscal year increased by a hundred and forty, just under a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, so about a three point seven percent increase in our school nutrition fund fund balance during the year. The student construction fund, that's the fund that we use to account for the building of the airplane. Uh that increased by twelve thousand five hundred dollars, or about fourteen point seven percent during the last fiscal year. And then our internal service fund, which is the fund that we use to account for our self-funded health and dental insurance in the district. And then our internal service fund, which is the fund that we use to account for our self-funded health and dental insurance in the district. That fund in balance increased by about two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars, or six point five percent during the year. So all of our fund balances increased during the year, except for that capital projects fund. Which again, only increased because we were using the proceeds from the money we borrowed to pay for the high school building addition. So nothing to be concerned about there. Um, so overall, uh the only other thing I would point out is on the compliance section, number thirteen on here. Uh there were no instances of non-compliance or material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. In our district's inter- internal constru- internal control structure found as part of the audit, so that's a positive thing, no material weaknesses there. The only thing that the auditors found in the audit report that could be considered at all negative, and really. I don't believe it's negative, is they found um, again, this year we had a certified enrollment variance. We had, and these are, we have these pretty much every year now, because. Certified enrollment is a very complicated process, and what it was this year is. We had two students who had attended Edison Academy, they dropped out of Edison Academy. And it did not get communicated to us until after certified enrollment was taken, that they had dropped out. So that's the reason we had a point, or two point zero FTE. Um decrease in our certified enrollment because of that. And then the other one point oh FTE that we had was because there was a student. Who had been living in our district, but they moved out during the summer and attended another district, but we were not aware of that. Until after certified enrollment was taken. So they were reported on our certified enrollment as being a resident student, but shouldn't have been, so that's the reason for the other one. So again, not really, I wouldn't say our fault, it's just we weren't notified until after certified enrollment that they had moved out. So again, that's the only thing that the auditors found on the schedule of findings and responses on that portion of the audit report. So otherwise, again, a very, very clean audit report. Um, given the auditors, Bonsec and Fromm, they're, they're great to work with. Um. And we'll be presenting this to the um GFOA and ASBO. Hopefully they're gonna work for the tenth year in a row, so. Anybody has any questions, I'll take any questions on it?
No questions, because, like, they don't even know what to say, great job, I mean, like, you're amazing, without you, I don't know.
Thank you very much, um. Thanks for saying that, because I almost forgot to say, I gotta give credit though to the people who work for me. Lori Wakeland, our staff accountant, just amazing, she does a phenomenal job. Doing the nitty gritty of the stuff here in the business office, um. Um, well, Kelly Hatler, who does payroll. Um, I had to see her leaving, she's done a great job taking over payroll for Joyce Bowens a few years ago. Um, Kim Meyer, yes, Kim, our accounts payable, um bookkeeper person. She took over Felisa's paper, she's been doing a great job also, those, those are the main people in the business office um that are involved with the audit report. Uh Cory Gamble, our food service person, of course, they look at the nutrition fund also, so she um gets involved with the audit sum too. Debbie, they, they look at board minutes sometimes, don't they, and those kind of, and our. Our required things that we're supposed to publish in the newspaper, where we have to get an affidavit for publishing. Uh bills and um bid notices and those type of things in the newspaper, so they do work with Debbie some too, so.
Enrollment is probably the biggest.
And open enrollment, lest I forget that, so. So anyway, yeah, thanks to all those people also, so couldn't do it without them.
Mike has very good people, counting himself, and I think the second part is just the checks and balance that they have in place. Because an auditor's coming in to try to find something that you're not checking for, and then double checking, and. They just do a great job making sure that we always have a checks and balance that helps these audit reports well, so. If you think about all that transpires between eight buildings, there's a lot of moving parts to this, and it's easy not to check something, and they do a great job of that.
And we have them, we have a. This firm basically locked in.
For two more years.
More years for the audit.
Yeah, we did an RFP last year, you may recall, and they were the low bid, and. So they had to do it for two more years after this year.
Okay.
With this audit.
Sounds good.
All right.
And I appreciate the, kind of the cheat sheet here, makes it easier to understand.
I like these audits, I don't remember, somebody just got convicted of fraud, because they were doing it county level, and I think myself. Pretty tight process with the external auditors going, so I feel especially concerned about that here.
Yeah, there was just something, there was just something in the news within the last week or so, it wasn't the school district, but a.
No, it was at a county level, I think.
Yeah, a city, or the one I'm thinking about was.
That must have been different one.
Yeah.
Any other questions regarding the financial report? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board accept the Pleasant Valley Community School District annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, as issued by Bonsec and Fromm, Fromm.
Fromm.
Thank you, LLP.
Second.
Not you?
Me now.
Uh, motion by Director Wheeler, second by Director Wagle. That the board move to accept the Pleasant Valley Community School District annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. As issued by Bonsec and Fromm, LLP, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wagle?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Puncle?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Brockman?
Yes. And lastly, the October monthly financial.
All right, the only thing I was gonna point out here is, you may recall last month. It looked kind of unusual, because we had accrued the property taxes that we were gonna receive in October. Onto the books for September, and you might recall the reason we did that was because if we hadn't done that. Our PEPAL fund balance would have been in the negative at the end of September. And so um your, and your fund balance is never supposed to be negative at the end of any month. The only other way we could have um gotten it out of the negative would have been an inter-fund borrowing. Which just gets a little trickier, because then you have to pay interest between the funds and that kind of stuff. So that's how we handled that last month, but it made the, it made things look weird last month, because our fund balance. When you compared it to the previous year, was much, much higher. Well, that's all fixed itself here in October. In October now, if you compare the current year's numbers, as far as like ending fund balances and revenue. And expenses go to the previous year, things are much, much more comparable. So I just wanted to make that note, so. Yeah, and looking at the October monthly financials then, everything's continuing to um progress at as we would expect at this time of the fiscal year. I didn't see anything that stood out to me as unusual or of concern, so. I'll take any questions if there's any questions, otherwise just need a motion to accept the monthly financials for October.
I probably, probably should ask this one, we talked about budget before, but.
Mm-hmm.
I noticed tuition went up half a million dollars to last year and this year, but we have declining enrollment. Is that a fee increase, or what causes that number to be different? Not the actuals, the budget number.
Oh, um, for miscellaneous income student tuition?
Yeah, that one.
Um, well, the district cost per, even though our enrollment went down. The tuition's based on your district cost per pupil amount, and that went up, but basically by the two percent SSA. So I, I would say that, um, well, also tuition's based on open enrollment.
The number of kids we have come to us.
While our certified enrollment went down, our open enrollment deficit. Is better, is more positive than it was a year ago, so that would also be, we have more students open enroll in than we did a year ago, I believe, right?
True statement, and then we also have more students who are tuitioning into us, say from like Illinois.
Oh.
Or they, if they miss the open enrollment deadline, they could be like, let's say they're a betting or stupid, they want to come to us and they can't open enroll, they could tuition in also. If they wanted to.
So that could be done any time of the year.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, I will take the motion.
I move that the board accept the monthly financial reports for October, two thousand twenty-five as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Kenwisher, second by Director Smith. The board accept the monthly financial reports for October, two thousand twenty-five as presented, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler?
Yes.
Dr. Wagle?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Puncle?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Ayers?
Yes, thank you. All right, with that, uh, we will be having one meeting in December. Uh, December fifteenth, it will be an early start due to the high school concert that evening. Um and then January, as you guys can see, will be a very busy month for us, so make sure you get all those dates on your calendar, so. You are aware of uh the uh, of the commitment there. Um and, and I just want to point out, our meeting will start at seven PM on January twenty-ninth, but. We will want to kind of block that afternoon for the interview process.